To order a work session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Tuesday, August 9th, 2022 at 6:10 PM. A quorum of the Board are physically present at AISD's central office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. And to our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I also want to recognize that Trustee Boswell is joining us by video, so welcome, Trustee Boswell. Tonight is an opportunity for the Board of Trustees to discuss and share feedback on a potential order to call a bond election for November 2022. We want to remind the public that we will have an opportunity for public testimony on the potential vote to order a bond election during the August 11th special voting meeting. And the community can also email trustees at trustees@austisd.org. For the last month, the Board has been discussing a potential bond. And tonight is an opportunity to discuss the potential bond language and the administrative recommendations, which are both uploaded to tonight's meeting and Board Docs. Before we ask the administration to share our latest update and timeline, I'd like to ask the Board to consider moving the executive session portion for the bond. We're scheduled to receive legal advice tonight on this bond, including legal guidance on legislative and legal requirements for a bond election. And some of this guidance may assist trustees in tonight's discussion. So trustees, are there any concerns or questions about moving to executive session for legal advice on the bond for now before returning to our open discussion? And if there's not, we will now recess the open meeting at 6:13 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. When we have finished, we will return to the dais for the discussion and before going back to the executive session at the end of the meeting for other scheduled items.
We will now reconvene the open meeting at 7:53 PM. Dr. Mays, would you introduce our item and staff for tonight's presentation?
Sure, thank you trustee Rodriguez. Before I do so, I will take a personal privilege. Today is not Bring Your Mom to Work Day, but my mom did pop up and surprise us and is in the back, back there.
We have an FTC here.
Oh, no, no, no. She'll often call and I'm like, "Mom, I'm at work." And so now she gets a chance to see like, okay, this is why normally I'm not answering the phone, so. But thank you for joining us.
Dr. Mays, could you share her cellphone number with the board members?
No. But again, good evening to everybody. I want to begin by thanking a lot of the people here tonight, the members of the Bond Steering Committee, the Long Range Planning Committee, members of the Equity Office, our Board of Trustees, and most especially Chief Operating Officer, Matias Segura, and Chief Financial Officer, Ed Ramos, who have led this work. They are an incredible team who have devoted countless hours to get us to this evening. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the time the board has devoted to listening, meeting, and asking for input and feedback. We appreciate all of the evenings you have dedicated to supporting the entire process. As we come to you with our recommendation, I am very proud to share that what is evident is that there is a common vision and commitment from everyone who has been involved in this work. Our recommendation is aligned with the recommendations from the BSC and your input. We are in agreement with nearly 90% of the BSC's proposal, which has led us to the strongest proposal possible and one that we are very proud of. This bond will set a historical precedent because it has been developed with intentionality. The foundation was created with the equity by design model. This enabled us to get to such an intentional bond that increases safety, centers equity, benefits every student, addresses affordability. You will hear more about this tonight, but I want to underline the historical nature of this bond. In our entire history, this district has never had a bond package that does more for students and communities in Title I schools, both in total dollars and as a percentage of the bond. It is not perfect, no, it's not, so I'll go on right again and say it is not perfect, but it is better than good. The bond will positively affect the lives of our kids and our communities and generations to come. We cannot miss this historic opportunity, and so with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Segura, Dr. Holly, Mr. Ramos, and Jason Stafford. Thank you all.
My name is Matias Segura. I'm the Chief of Operations, and I could not be more excited to be with you all this evening to discuss all the great work that has been going on for the last several months. Where I want to start is kind of where we are in the process. There's been, again, a lot of great work, been working with our Bond Steering Committee. That work was rooted in the work that was out of the Long Range Planning Committee. And then we heard from the board and we heard from our community. And some of the things that we heard are shown on Slide 2. And what we heard is that, you know, exploring and pursuing the larger of the two plans was something we really wanted to consider. Just acknowledging the amount of the number of students that would be impacted by this work was something that we wanted to ensure was brought forward. We really also wanted to consider those projects that might have a disproportionate impact to operations. You know, those projects that have, whether it's lower FCA scores or have historically had a significant cost associated with them, just see if there was an opportunity to address some of those concerns. We also wanted to make sure that we had the right projects for the right community needs. And so looking at adjustments if appropriate. And then lastly, just looking at how phased solutions could work with some of our larger projects. One of the things that I believe I shared last time before I left and closed the meeting was that to explore these adjustments, we would need to look at perhaps the largest of the projects. And that was the methodology that we used as we moved forward through this process. As you move into the next couple of slides, I want to point out that there's really a, you know, a series of themes that are foundational to this work, things that I can honestly say here before you all are rooted in the work and are part of all of the great projects that will come out of this. The first is that safety has been and will continue to be our top priority. Significant investments in fencing, keys and locks, security vegetables, which are absolutely critical to ensuring compliance with our security standards. But I also want to point out that every single modernized facility that's proposed in this program will be brought up to our safety and security standards. And so they're not listed in here as discrete dollars because the entire system itself will be brought up to our standards. And so certainly something that we're very proud of. The next thing is that, you know, this was an equity-focused process. I can say here with certainty that there are dozens of projects within this program that might not be here otherwise. I do want to call out, you know, specifically the Nelson Terminal. You know, it's one of those projects that serves our staff in a very important way and for the last two or three bond propositions has been moved off. And so just really thinking about, you know, the individuals who are in that space, the facility itself, and the communities that that terminal serves, just really proud of the fact that it has been and it continues to be an important project reflected in this program. The other thing is that this is a bond program for the entire school district. You know, we often talk about, you know, the seven visions for student success. We talk about a lot about the fact that we want all of our students to be safe, secure, and have the best learning environment possible. And so you can see here just some of the allocations across the district with this proposal. The $46 million in fencing and security, again, not considering modernizations, the fact that, you know, our high schools have significant investments within them, you know, over $700 million. Also acknowledging that there are critical deficiencies all over the district, and this will not fix everything. You heard Dr. Mays say that this is not a perfect plan. It's not perfect because we have limited resources. We can't do everything, but we do believe that this is a significant investment, and I think most importantly, it's a significant investment in communities that have historically... it's a significant investment in communities that have historically been underserved, and we're certainly very proud of that. As I hand it over to the next slide and have Ed talk about affordability, I just think it's important to acknowledge that from an operations perspective, we truly, truly want to be invisible. I want to make sure that, you know, operations takes up as few brain cells from a teacher as possible, not worrying about whether the AC is going to turn on, not worrying about whether the water is going to run, not, you know, having them worry about whether they're safe or not. And so in this way, our goal is to begin to remove the burden of the operational expenses from the general operating budget. And so, Ed?
And so one of the key pieces of this bond, it is one of the largest, or if not the largest, bond in Austin ISD history, but it's also important to look at affordability. Is this bond affordable to our taxpayers in our community? One of the important facts to know is the 6.5 cent decrease that we have discussed in prior meetings. So we do know as part of House Bill 3 and tax compression, by law, we must reduce our overall maintenance and operations portion of our tax rate. And so because of the property growth in the Austin area, that reduction has calculated to 6.5 cents. So that's a given for this 2223 school year. If the bond were to move forward and be approved by our taxpayers, we have also talked about the one penny increase, which would be on the debt service side. That increase would occur in the 2324 school year. So overall, we are still looking at an overall tax rate reduction in this district, not only this school year, but also the next school year, which will be explained in a further slide. And so one of the things that we also want to mention is a portion of the bond fixes deficiencies that currently exist in the district. And so we know that we spend $1.7 million on HVAC rentals. And so that amount of money coming out of our budget is equivalent to 25 teacher salaries and benefits. And so one of the opportunities that we have with the bond program that has already occurred in the 2017 bond program is that as we continue to modernize and repair our aging facilities, that frees up operating dollars that we currently are expending to repair these facilities. And so what that does is currently we have dollars that are competing against what we can pay our teachers and our staff, as well as what we can spend on instructional costs. And so by making sure that these bonds renovate and modernize our facilities, we free up these competing dollars. We also know that we, one of the biggest, the second largest line item in our budget is utilities. And as we continue to modernize our facilities and improve the efficiency in our facilities, we also reduce the amount that we spend on energy, which, again, we can move those funds towards staff and teacher compensation and instructional costs in the district.
So as we move forward to Slide 7, one of the things I think is important to talk about is how we got here. You know, this didn't happen overnight. You heard us talk about all the long hours that our Long Range Planning Committee put into this, as well as our Bond Steering Committee. But even before that, before the work session with the board in August, you know, we had to complete assessments. And before that, we had to, you know, think through the methodology of how we got to where we are today. And so you see here on this slide just the progression of the work. And I certainly, you know, acknowledge that there's been a tremendous amount of thoughtful work. As Dr. Mays said, nothing's perfect. But we do believe that the work has been intentional. We think that this work will address significant needs and position the district much better for years to come. And we're excited about the number of students that will have a, will feel and experience an improved learning space because of this work. And so as we move forward, just wanted to have a conversation around the administration's recommendation. You know, as we move on to Slide 9, we're going to kind of break it down and categorize the projects by type. And the first here are high school investments. One of the things I want to point out when we think about kind of some of the adjustments from the last, from the plan that we brought before y'all, was that we think about where investments have significant impacts on the campus. And when I think about impacts, what I'm saying, duration of construction. Where do we have, you know, large projects where we're going to go in and do these repairs and improve the deficiencies? And how might that impact a space? And if we spend that money, how much of an improvement will it be on the student's experience? And so wherever we had large investments of deficiencies within the bond package, we made adjustments so that we could truly consider them phase ones of modern, phase one modernizations, thereby improving the educational space as well. So you'll see adjustments throughout, but ultimately, you can see that the majority of our comprehensive high schools do receive significant investments in this plan. As you move on to middle schools, you'll see here on the left, the phased modernizations, Burnett Middle School, Dobie, Martin, O'Henry. Again, you know, modernizations and phased modernizations are really some of the only ways that we can tackle some of these more complex dense sites. But certainly acknowledge that we do have a really unique opportunity with Bertha Sattler Means to modernize that facility fully all at one time. I do want to point out that, you know, as kind of an understanding of some of the concerns that we heard, we did also want to consider some of those schools that were the lowest from a facility condition assessment perspective and understand, you know, what adjustment could be made to help reduce that burden on general operating budget. And so Covington Middle School was an adjustment. It is the last remaining school that's, middle school that has 50 FCA score below. The others, B, you know, Henry and Martin have already been brought into the phased modernization. And all we simply did there was say, okay, you know, we know that the current plan, the previous plan considered safety and security years one through five, as well as HVAC years zero, things that are broken now. We simply added HVAC systems, electrical and plumbing improvements, years one through five. So when working with the BSC, we had this large table that identified all the deficiencies. And so what we said was, let's go ahead and see if we can pick up that next series of improvements to really, you know, impact that FCA score and reduce the expenses that we're seeing on an annual basis tied to that campus. So that was the methodology. And again, it was only for middle schools, that schools that were 50 or lower. And then as you move on to elementary schools, a couple of things to point out here, again, just reinforcing, and again, as far as safety and security goes, those open space concepts, including Cook, Oakill, Odom, and Williams, are being addressed in a meaningful way. We certainly recognize that, you know, having classrooms that, you know, have to be accessed to get to other classrooms is not how we want to support our students. And so we made adjustments there. Again, that was last time, but certainly want to bring that to your attention. And then using that same methodology regarding facility condition assessment scores, we said, you know, which facilities have an FCA score of 40 or below, right, unsatisfactory? And we use the same logic, you know, just taking the next set of deficiencies, which would be HVAC, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, in years one through five, and then adding that in. And so you can see adjustments upward for Brighter Woods, Highland Park, and Ridgetop. I will tell you, every other school with an FCA score of 40 or below is already in a modernized bucket, modernization project, or is in a comprehensive safety improvement project, so thereby receiving significant investments. So this just kind of, you know, closes out the last unsatisfactory related elementary schools. So moving on, just a different breakdown of the elementary schools. You can see here on the left, all the modernizations that are proposed, a significant amount, very excited about it. You know, each of these schools, as you know, will be designed with the community, using our campus architectural teams. They will be tailored to the community they reside in, which is why no two of these will look alike. And I think that's exactly what needs to happen. We do include the Bear Creek Edition Land for Future Southeast Elementary School. We have significant growth in the Goodnight Ranch area, wanted to ensure that we had identified funds to secure land. And then deficiencies at all the other campuses that I mentioned, certainly a significant amount, at almost $200 million. And so this is the current breakdown of elementary school investments. There's a variety of ways that we can show this, but we thought at this time, showing the breakdown by campus type was the best way to show kind of how those investments would impact our students. And so with that, I'll hand it back over to Ed to talk about the tax rate history.
So we can't talk about the tax rate without talking about the tax rate compression. And so back in the 1920 school year, the state of Texas really put forth an effort to reducing overall tax rates for property owners. And so as part of that process, they introduced House Bill 3. And so when you look at that graph, you see that between the 2015 all the way to the 2019 school years, we had a flat tax rate of just a little over $1.19. Once tax rate compression was introduced with House Bill 3 back in the 1920 school year, then that's when you see in the graph, our overall tax rates continued to decline year after year from the passage of that law. And so when you look at the current fiscal year, 2223, we are proposing a tax rate of .9966. So that is an automatic 6.5 total tax rate reduction, 6.5 cent reduction for this current school year. In another graph, I'm going to show you the effect that it will have the following school year. But basically, what we're trying to show here is since tax rate compression was introduced by House Bill 3, over the past four years, we've reduced our tax rate by 19.5 cents. That tax rate reduction, the total tax rate reduction, will continue in future years as long as the current state tax compression system remains in effect. Next slide. And so this is basically what our tax rates will look like based on the timeline with a bond proposal. So in the, this past school year, we had a total tax rate of 1.0617. When we talk about this proposal and having a one penny tax rate increase, that would be to the debt service portion of our tax rate. And so when you look at the green column, that is the proposed tax rate that we will propose to the board in September, and the board will move forward with adopting in September. That includes a six and a half cent tax rate reduction. If we move forward with this bond proposal and the bond does pass by our voters, that would increase the debt service portion of our tax rate by one cent, which is what you see in red, that .123. But then our overall maintenance and operations portion of our tax rate, because of tax rate compression, will still continue to decrease. Next year, we are projecting a four cent decrease. So next year, we would have an additional total tax rate reduction of three cents. So over the next two years, this year and next year, we are actually projecting a total tax rate reduction of almost 10 cents, 9.5 cents. Next slide. And then when we talk about the tax impact that one penny would have, we just want to make sure that the board understands that a penny doesn't actually cost an entire penny as far as when we simplify the calculation. So earlier, you've heard about, let's say, a $500,000 home, one penny would be $50 increase to that homeowner. There are several factors that we have to take into account when discussing the tax rate, especially with the current tax rate, tax laws that are in effect in Texas. One of them is the 10% cap on taxable assessed value. So what that means basically is if a homeowner was taxed on a certain value, it cannot increase more than 10%. So the homeowner cannot be taxed on more than 10% of the value of the prior year. So in the first AISD home example that you see, a home was valued at $187,589. That value grew to $312,472. So that is a market value. However, the home is not actually taxed on that market value. It is taxed on that 10% limitation, which is $206,348. Also, in May, there was an election on the homestead exemption. And so that amount increased from $25,000 to $40,000. So you take that into account in addition to the total tax rate reduction. And so for the AISD home number one, you see back in 2122, they paid $1,726 in taxes. Now, this current school year, they're projected to pay $1,658. And so you do a similar calculation to a home valued at $450,046. Last year, the value, the market value grew to $679,621. They would only be taxed on $495,051. And then once you take into account the homestead exemption and the lower total tax rate, they would be looking at total taxes of $4,535 this current school year compared to $4,513. So that is the actual true calculation that a homeowner would see. And so that better explains what is happening to the value that they are going to be taxed on, the homestead exemption that they will face, and then the total tax rate reduction that will continue to come from Austin ISD. Next slide. We also wanted to show where our tax rate compares to other central Texas districts. And so we are the lowest tax rate in central Texas. So the tax rates that you see before you, these are proposed rates from our surrounding districts. Many of these districts will officially adopt their total tax rate in August or September. We will adopt ours in September. And so in looking at our 2223 total tax rate, we are looking at a tax rate just a little under a dollar at .9966, which is the lowest tax rate. The next lowest would be Eames ISD. They're just a little over a dollar at 1.0046. So even when, if we move forward with a bond proposal that passes and we increase our total tax rate by a penny, we would still be the lowest tax rate in central Texas. And that is what we are projecting for next year as well.
So trustees, before we hand it over to Communications, just wanted to kind of lay out the three propositions as currently shown based on the plan that's been brought forward, the administrative recommendation. In this, in this recommendation, the propositions have broken down in this way. Proposition A, general purpose, would be for $2.126 billion. Proposition B, special purpose technology, would be $76.4 million. And then Proposition C, stadiums, would be $47.434 million. I do want to point out that in the stadiums, you know, those would include the improvements at Nelson, Burger, and Delco. And so when you think about, you know, where do those dollars come from, that's really the foundation for those, the buildup of that proposition value. And so with that, I'd like to hand it over to Jason Stanford, Chief of Communications, to take us through the next couple of slides.
Thank you, President Rodriguez, trustees, Dr. Mays, Dr. Mays's mom. It's a pleasure to talk to you tonight. Talked to you in the last meeting about how we are going to roll out expeditiously to get a bond book as quickly as possible and campus one pagers. I'm not going to repeat what we said before, but everything I said that time and that you've received subsequently in a board update stands. I want to focus on the differences and the updates since then. The communications plan is underway. What you're going to see in, before tomorrow, you're going to see a series of tweet threads in which every tweet describes what each campus is going to get. So all the high schools will be grouped together in one tweet thread, all the middle schools, and then elementary schools will be divided up. We wanted to do it all in one tweet thread, but Twitter has limits. So we're getting around that. And that is to take us to Thursday, when we, there will be a vote. In anticipation of a positive result, we have a press conference planned for the following day, Friday at Travis. And I know you've been invited to that. We have dates now set for spokesperson training. And you see examples ahead of you in the presentation of a sample one-page fact sheet and social media posts. Next slide, please. So these are, a lot of what we're going to be doing is taking advantage of existing meetings in the community. We will not have a lot of time to set up our own meetings. I think we've planned for five town halls and AISD events, but we are going to be piggybacking on everything else we can, from the Taco Shack Bowl to community meetings that are already on the schedule. We are planning on having general one pagers for the overall bond at first day of school on campuses, but when the campus-specific one pagers, we're planning and targeting to have them at the campuses by back-to-school nights, when we hope there's a little less of a hectic rush and more time to focus on other things.
All right. Well, thank you. I think at this point, probably be able to answer any questions. Dr. Holly, if you'd like to share any thoughts or questions regarding all the work the last couple of weeks?
I think I'd like to wait for the questions, if that's okay.
Be fine. So, Dr. Mays, turn it back over to you.
Thank you all.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. First of all, thank you all very much for the presentations. Before I recognize trustees, we'd like to remind, I'd like to remind my colleagues and our community that tonight's meeting is an opportunity for feedback and questions. And trustees, this is an opportunity for us to discuss the bond we will consider action on for Thursday, August 11. And as a reminder to the public and trustees, our agenda for Thursday is already posted due to the 72-hour posting requirement. And while the bond document and language is posted, the board still has the opportunity to take action to amend or add to the language during the meeting on Thursday. So we'd like to start by asking each trustee to share their feedback and questions, one at a time. And trustee Boswell, can we start with you, as I know you're joining us? And trustee Boswell, can we start with you, as I know you're joining us online? Or if you'd like to pass, we can go to the next trustee.
I am happy to pass for now and listen. I have a couple of questions and a couple of thoughts, but I can share them in a bit. Thank you.
Great. I think last time I went right to left. This time, I'm going to go left to right. So trustee Sapata.
If you don't want to, I'll just have to run those.
Oh, your mic.
Okay. All right. I heard, well, first, thank you to Mathias and Ramos, staff, Jason. Y'all have done amazing work, and I know this is, this is not easy work, trying to appease everyone, right? But I did hear Dr. Mays start by saying 90%, we're 90% in agreement. I'm curious to know, what is the percentage in equity in this new proposal?
Trustee Sapata, that's not, when you talk about the percentage of equity, it's not quantifiable in that way. Dr. Mays was referring to the proposal from the BSC and talking about the proposal from administration. And so it's not quite quantifiable in that way because, because of the process, quite frankly. And it, it's not a linear process. It's not a quantitative process. But we did look, when we look at the expenditures and we look at where we're allocating funds, I think that's where Dr. Mays got to the not quite 90%, almost 90%. I think it's more like 88%. I believe 12% difference, but that 12% is not quantifiable as equity. And I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Segura, I mean, Mr. Segura, because he, you know, as we talk about all of this, and we're talking about the quantifiable, the equity is not quantifiable in quite that way.
But just before you turn it over, I mean, that's the lens we were looking through to create this proposal. So I'm just kind of disturbed that it doesn't feel like it is anymore after all the work our committee had done. So that's, so that's why I asked that question.
I would like to respond to that because I do understand this wasn't a perfect process. It absolutely wasn't. But when we went back, we wanted to take a more holistic approach. And so we took a holistic approach and looked at additional projects. And so there's no way this could be perfectly equitable, because even our own committee, when they finished the process, they went back and they said, "We left out Martin." And they came back and they said, "Oh, no, we did not allocate enough funding for CTE." And so even if we had maybe three or even six more months with this process, which of course we don't, we would probably find more flaws in the work. So this work was done as well as it could be done in the, in the time that we had. But I guarantee you, had we more time, it would reach perfection. But we have not reached perfection at this juncture.
No, I don't expect perfection.
Yeah.
I know that we're not perfect, and I know that, like we said, it's not a perfect plan, but I just, I just see a decrease in the original intent. So, thank you.
So, if, trustee Sapata, one of the things that I think is important to consider is that, you know, these adjustments were not all done with, with one in 10, meaning that there were high-opportunity schools that receive additional investment through these adjustments. You can look at Crockett, for instance, that, you know, received, you know, $30 or $40 million more, and that's a high-opportunity area, high-opportunity school. We can look at Clifton, special education. We can look at CTE, all alignment, in alignment with the long-range planning committee's work that received an additional investment. And so, you know, I, I believe with all my heart, this is an incredibly equitable process and that everything was looked at through that lens. But there are realities, that there are operational considerations, and there are just costs that, you know, we wanted to bring forward because they do impact our ability of managing the general operating budget. And in operations, you know, it's just one of those things that we have to consider. But again, I think what you'll find in these, in this plan is that it's, it's adjustments in that direction as well, and, you know, doubling down and adding investments to high-opportunity schools.
Well, at the beginning, what did modernization mean?
Yeah, so a modernization is whenever we look at completely reconfiguring a campus, right? Now, what I've said from the beginning was that this is almost, it's very difficult to do all at one time at middle schools and high schools. There are a variety of reasons why that is. The first is just the length of construction on a job, on a campus. The second is the ability to swing students all the way around over the course of several years. And lastly, it's cost, right? They're very, very big projects. And so certainly for elementary schools, we, whenever we modernize, we want to ensure that all of the HVAC, all of the improvements are addressed. We bring the school up to our education specifications, including security and safety, and that it performs in a way that reduces our dependence on utility budgets and cost. And so that's the intent behind modernization. And whenever we apply modernizations at middle schools and high schools, we try to do it as, as much as we can, but we also acknowledge that it's very, very rare that we can do it all at once. And so that's the intent behind modernization. It truly allows us to reduce our deferred maintenance and really improve the educational experience of our students.
Yeah, that was the, the other thing I noticed, that the modernizations in the previous were full modernization, and now there's, it's still being called modernization, but it's not a full. So we, we changed the definition of the intent. So, because we wanted our, we want, I want to see the schools get built and done with. And I think this really takes away, I mean, you know, takes away from getting that work done for these schools that have been waiting for a very long time to get done. And so that's the other issue I saw on this new proposal. So those were the, the two main things, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sapata. Trustee say?
Thank you so much. So I'm going to take a moment and kind of share, like, my take on the, sort of the division of labor in the creation of this bond, just super quick. And then to preface my question, which is my, my take on it, and I understand it might not be shared with everyone on the board, but my, my take on this process is, first of all, I've been super impressed and very appreciative of our bond steering committee, many of whom are here. I even see a couple of FAPAC members here as well, so thanks for that. But the bond steering committee was charged to create a set of recommendations, which is what the, what they are, based on an equity-by-design framework, which I am so grateful for because I knew I couldn't do that work. And we really needed a very cohesive, year-long effort to create this under the guidance of Dr. Hawley and other experts. So I feel really good about what they proposed. Now it's up to, I feel like it's up to me and up to each of us as individual trustees to figure out how much we value that work, how much we value what our own constituents are asking for, our own values and ethics and beliefs about what needs to happen in this district, et cetera. So I think, I feel really glad that we're at 88%. I was texting Mathias late last night going, "Give me the number. What percentage are, you know, how much are we able to maintain of what the BSC did?" And, and I remember thinking even before getting your answer was, like, I could live with, like, if we're in the high 80s. Like, if we can keep about 85, 90% of this, I'll, I'll feel better about it, knowing My biggest fear, thinking back to our budget vote, is that fiscal cliff. And just knowing that, like, I'd rather pass something that is, my goal now is to get this thing passed. Otherwise, no one's going to get anything. However, I still highly value what the BSC did. And from what I understand is, while we were back there in exec session, the BSC came up with some potential plans, proposals. So I would like to ask Dr. Mays and President Rodriguez, would it be appropriate or allowable to have them share some of the work since they have, they've carried it so far? And, and I'm curious to kind of hear what, what they would like to see.
I believe, and we did get the request, and we're trying to troubleshoot that. I think the concern right now is, was the entire BSC committee together to kind of develop the proposal, to be able to bring that piece forward. So we're actually talking with Ms. Badiyo now to try to make the determination, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll hear from her in a little bit. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that there's a discernment being made by both our board council and some of the members of the BSC who are sharing information with Dr. Mays. What I, what we understand is that is not a full proposal from the committee.
Correct.
And therefore, it might not be appropriate to share right now.
Okay.
But they're obviously welcome to share it by email or in our public comment on Thursday. But I think that the committee, out of respect for each other, is sharing that they, they're, they're not comfortable sharing that because it's not coming from the whole committee, if that makes sense.
So would it be, okay, so if an individual member of the BSC wanted to send, send us these proposals to trustees tonight, like, right now, they could do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were clear that we do want the feedback. It's just about the avenues that we receive their feedback. I don't want anybody to feel like we don't want the feedback. I think that we've tried to definitely preserve some of the recommendation that was presented by the BSC, out of respect for all of the work and time that they put in. And so again, wanted to make sure we let you all know that, given the question.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Wagner.
I am trying to parse through all the information that we have in the documents in front of us. I think, I feel like we're getting to a better and better place. Though, I'm pleased to see Covington rising in there with more projects. I think where I'm struggling, though, is in reading the language in the documents, that it's hard to understand or envision what those projects actually mean. So, because as it stands right now, it looks like maybe just a little bit more money was put into HVAC, but it's hard to really understand what that brings to life on the campus. Additionally, I'm really struggling with the language at the Bowie campus. And the reason I'm struggling with that language is because in the conversations that we've had, it seems to me that we've already made a lot of progress on HVAC improvements, but it doesn't appear that way to our campus community because the HVAC is still not able to function appropriately until we fully complete the HVAC work. What we have in the bond right now sounds like another Band-Aid for HVAC. It doesn't express to me that we really are taking on another phase of work within the long-range planning for Bowie, and that, that HVAC work will finally complete a long series of HVAC improvements that have been made at the campus and get us to a place where the concerns that I hear over and over and over and over again within my district, it's great that we've gotten improvements in the 17 bond, but if we have a campus where we can't even keep the heat and air conditioning on, where we have water leaks and no running water several times a year, then that is, that's a problem that needs to be cured. And so I don't know how we get to a point where we can fully encompass that work within the package that's envisioned for Bowie. But right now, the language that I see in front of me doesn't say that. And if it doesn't say that to me as a board member, I know that my community will read that and see that as, as one more Band-Aid or one more, you know, tiptoe towards finally having a solution in place to address a longstanding problem at that school. So that's my ask, is that we formalize the Bowie project into a Phase 2 project that includes the completion of the HVAC work for the campus, the turf that we're promising all of the other secondary schools, as well as the security upgrades for the campus. And if we can formalize that, that language more clearly to our community, then that I can support. I'm also pleased to see Bear Creek within the proposal as well. I think that that is critically important for District 7. And just to be clear, I know we're talking, having a lot of conversations about equity, and there have been a lot of conversations about, does District 7 need more investment? Well, the reality is that District 7, as it stands right now, within our bond package, has the very lowest, by a sizable margin, of investment of any district within AISD. And so I want to be very clear about that. I do think that is with intentionality, and I think that is appropriate to have intention behind our investment within historically underserved communities. I'm not complaining about that disparity, but I do want to be sure that we don't overlook the fact that there are, there are needs within every district in AISD. And those needs have to be met because all of our families have expectations around what, what kinds of schools their kids go to every day. And the reality that I see in District 7 is that we are losing families, and families are leaving because of overcrowding. They're leaving because of the state of the facilities. And when families leave our district for a charter, when families leave our district for a private school, or to move to a neighboring district to get something that they feel like they can't get in AISD, that affects every child in this entire district. That's not a District 7 problem when a family moves away. That is an entire district's problem for all of AISD because it affects our M&amp;O, and it affects our bottom line, and it affects our recapture. So that's where I want to be sure that we're not cutting off our nose to spite our face on some of these decisions. Deficient buildings cost the entire district money. And so I also want to be sure that we're not overlooking campuses that have very, very significant facilities, condition issues, because that will impact every child in this district. It'll impact how much we pay our teachers and everything else. So with that, I think I'll leave my ask as being very simple, having more clarity around the major projects. And then speaking specifically as the District 7 trustee, needing to see Bowie formalized as a Phase 2 to address the HVAC issues once and for all, as well as security and, and the athletics needs.
Thank you, trustee Anderson.
Thank you. So I got, phew, I got about seven questions. My first question, how did you arrive at the number 60 million for LBJ Phase 2 and Northeast Phase 1?
Yeah, so trustee, one of the things that we wanted to look at is, you know, and this is what I said to the board, I guess two weeks ago or two weeks ago, I forgot when I presented, was that we needed, to address some of the inputs that we were receiving, that we needed to find dollars while preserving the majority of what was produced by the bond steering committee. And so to do that, we focused on modernization projects, that were modernization projects. And so to do that, we focused on modernization projects that were modernization projects either full, half or partial, right? And really, at the end of the day, what we're looking at is the scope of that modernization project, just its scale. And so, and we never wanted to go below what the BSC had proposed in Plan A. And so, um, from what I recall, I know, I think like LBJ was, um, I think maybe below twenty million in Plan A, and then we moved it, and then the Bond Steering Committee, Plan B, moved it up. And then we found a space in the middle that we thought would be a meaningful improvement. It would be a significant investment on the campus. It would address the gymnasium, many of the HVAC systems, and be a meaningful Phase Two project that would work on that campus well. Um, you know, I, I think that is where we, we struggle, you know, like, how much of an investment is enough to have a meaningful impact on a student's learning experience? And what we know is that if you're going to spend a lot of money on deficiencies and not really improve the space, then at the end of the day, did we really do all that we could and did the dollar actually go where it intended? Or are we still spending on buildings and not student experience? So that was the, kind of the sequence of logic behind LBJ. As far as Northeast Early College High School, uh, it was very similar. We didn't want to go anywhere beneath, we didn't want to go below what the BSC had proposed in Plan A, which is again, a very significant investment as a Phase One modernization. But we knew that, you know, given its size and scale, uh, that we could deliver a meaningful project for less cost. And, and so that, that was really the, the logic behind it. Uh, trustee Anderson, it was just trying to figure out, okay, what is, what preserves the intent? What creates an improved space, a significantly improved space for that community, but also allows those dollars to be allocated to other things that we heard? And, and that was kind of what I hoped, maybe I didn't say it very clearly, but my, my, my hope was that when I said that to the board, you know, it was really those big projects. Um, you know, Travis Early College High School was explored. I think the challenge that was, we have there is just that Travis Early College High School is one of the few schools that actually allows itself to be modernized without having to swing the entire student body out. Um, you know, the complexity of, of projects, having construction occur during testing and when the students are in place, I mean, LBJ has that issue right now, right? It's very, very difficult to construct when you have an occupied campus. And so we didn't want to make things overly complicated where we already had a really good project. And again, Travis Early College High School was preserved in both Plan A and Plan B, the same amount, so we didn't look there. So that was kind of the series of, of kind of steps that we took to, to adjust those. Um, I think that, um, at the end of the day, you know, sixty million plus for both of those campus, campuses is a, a significant, meaningful phase. In an LBJ's case, it's a Phase Two, and in Northeast, it's, it's, it's a Phase One.
So how many phases?
So that's the question. Um, you know, I, I think, I can't sit here and tell you, trustee Anderson, that it's going to be three or that's going to be four. I can tell you that our hope is always to do as few as possible, but what happens is every time you get into a process like this, dollars get consumed very quickly because things become only more expensive. Um, my goal would be to do three, uh, if possible, but I do recognize that in some of our really big campuses, it could be four. You know, I look at McCallum, it's on a very, very, very tight site. It doesn't allow for expansion or swing space solutions very easily, which means that you're going to have to construct, move students, construct, move students, and that would require more phases unless we, you know, and so that's, that's what we kind of go through. So the goal's three. Um, in rare cases, we can get one, like Travis Early College High School. But we, you know, at the, at furthest, it'd be four. But again, if you think every five years, then you're thinking fifteen, twenty years before, before you go through a full, uh, rebuild. But again, these are very expensive buildings. Um, a brand-new high school, comprehensive high school, a large one, would cost three hundred and fifty million dollars. You know, Travis Early College High School is not even the largest high school that we would be able to rebuild. So, but you're right, it, it does take more phases when the dollar does come down.
And I know you mentioned it, but I am asking, you reiterated again, is upgrading the gym included in this cost?
Yes. Yes, I did verify that. Um, just wanted to make sure with certainty that was, you know, heard, um, and communicated to the DIES. You know, one of the things that, that we have to balance these descriptions with is acknowledging that we're going to go through this process with our campus architectural team, uh, with all of these projects. And so we want to identify the, kind of the key components, but then also allow for creativity and flexibility in the design, which is why some of these projects, you know, we're able to get a lot more in them once we actually go through the process. So where, where we were, where we could, we were intentional. We said, okay, crock it, it's visual performing arts and athletics spaces. And then from there, we grow. For McCallum, uh, and I'm using these as examples, you know, it might be that the academic space actually would go first because of deficiencies and because of the way the building is set, but it's not called out in that same way, just because when we go through the process, we want to address the deficiencies, the turf, we want to address all of that, and then work with the community to really figure out how to improve the space for that campus. Um, but for, for LBJ specifically, yes, that is included.
Why on the working draft, does the amount vary from Proposal A, B, and the working draft?
So, um, so the way that we, we built this up was the, Proposal A, or Plan A, was the Bond Steering Committee's plan that was provided to the administration about two and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago. That was a one point seven five billion, so that was a no tax rate increase. Then the Bond Steering Committee built the Plan B, which is the two point two five billion. And then we took that and based on feedback from the board, uh, you know, made adjustments to get to a working kind of recommendation, administrative recommendation. And so that's really the progression. I would say that one, the, the, the first one, the far left, is very difficult to compare to the next two, just because that doesn't contemplate a one cent increase or a net five point five percent, five point five cent decrease. But whenever we looked at projects, we did, the intentionality behind the BSC's recommendation was important. We never wanted to go below what they had recommended in the one point seven five and really tried to find a space in between, you know, the two point two five and one point seven five. And that's where we landed for those three specific projects, LBJ Northeast and Burnett Middle School.
With the monies, uh, from the looks of it, that were reduced, can you please identify where these dollars were put toward?
So the largest reductions came in, uh, for Burnett, going from a full modernized facility to a half-modernized facility, which is, which is what the BSC proposed in Plan A. Uh, it included, uh, a reduction in technology. I don't have the exact number, but it's, it's, I think, I have to, it's in a twenty, I think, twenty-six million dollar range. Uh, reduction, um, from a kind of larger Phase Two modernization LBJ to one that's a little north of sixty million, and then the same thing for Northeast Early College High School. And so those were the four, uh, like, large projects that contributed to, to the adjustments across, you know, many of these improvements. And so all of the other improvements, uh, the adjustments in budgets, uh, came from those, not in that sequence, but.
Can you please tell me why some elementaries listed for District One have a three hundred and seventy-five student capacity? What difference does that make with the proposed dollar amount?
So, uh, so it does have an impact. It reduces the, the, the cost of the improvement. Now, the total cost is around nine and a half million. We preserve dollars in there. I think the net reduction's eight. Uh, and that's because we wanted to ensure that, you know, where we could plan and design to receive a future, uh, expansion space, we could do it. One of the things that you're going to see us do from here on out in all projects is plan for flexibility and for future expansion. It is very difficult to come back in once a school is built if you hadn't really thought about how it actually would work once you expanded it. And so those dollars were, were, were adjusted. You know, we did hear about, you know, not wanting to create, wanting to create a non-school closure plan. And so for us, you know, taking those dollars and saying, okay, well, we also have additional issues or concerns at Barbara Jordan. We know that we have significant traffic issues there. It's something that the Bond Steering Committee has, had identified, actually is a significant need. I've actually been very tied to that space and that project, or that, that need for probably three years now. Uh, and then also recognizing that Clifton CTE, um, had not really been invested in this bond. It was something that came out of the Bond Steering Committee as a, as a kind of identified priority, but it was at the time identified that the schools would be the, the starting place. And so those funds really went to address those two, um, changes in, in scope, I would say. So CTE at Clifton, I think as a whole, increased by a little over ten million dollars, I believe. And I think that's a meaningful project for Clifton, where before it was, you know, just addressing some small deficiencies. Was that helpful, trustee Anderson?
You did.
Okay, thank you.
So you touched on it, but can you please provide the thought behind the decreases certain parts of technology? For me, that is a concern, uh, because I think back to Zoom when students were on Zoom. And so, just asking for the rationale behind it.
Yes, trustee Anderson, I would ask that Oscar, our Chief Technology Officer, please respond to that question, if that's okay?
Good evening, President Rodriguez, Dr. Mays, Board Trustees, uh, trustee Anderson. Regarding the reductions in technology, uh, working with the administrative team, we're going to lean a little heavier on ESSER, um, to allow for more room for, uh, some of the projects in the bond. We're also going to be relooking at some of the scope of the technologies and really looking to, uh, accelerate some of the efficiencies in our systems, um, to bring down the overall cost for the length of the planning window for the five years originally that was planned for the bond.
So how does the reduction, uh, impact the infrastructure? Because I see that was one of the reductions.
Uh, one example is that we're, uh, taking back and looking at our, uh, data centers. So we currently have two data centers, but we're making an aggressive move to the cloud, uh, for various reasons. So long-term, that will mean we have less dependency on a data center, uh, those data centers. So we're looking to, um, deactivate those costs and sunset, uh, some of that infrastructure so that there's less cost overall as we move to, towards a more cloud-based, uh, you know, technology strategy.
Thank you. So the rest of my stuff is really comment, I mean, request, and then a comment of concern. So can, my request is, can you please provide me with the last three bonds that included Austin High? And can you also tell me, uh, the last time Austin High Fine Arts Space was upgraded? And can you tell me the last time when LBJ's Fine Arts Space was upgraded? And, uh, my concern is Austin High. Like, that really chaps my hide. It really chaps my hide. Um, I'm looking at, I, I know I hear a significant investment in District One, but how long have we been waiting? And to see Austin High on there, and to see a mention of a Fine Arts Space when you can go to Northeast and you can go to LBJ, and I guarantee their Fine Arts Space doesn't look like an Austin High. So my issue again is with Austin High being on there, and I stand by that.
Thank you. Um, this is never an easy process. And, um, I've, I've, I've participated in, in, in several of these processes, and I, again, want to extend my thanks to the people who are sitting here, um, not only right here in front of me, but also behind, who have served, uh, as the volunteers who worked so hard on this. I, again, um, one hundred percent know how much all of this word means to y'all, and I'm grateful and appreciative. And, um, I'm grateful knowing that, um, I work with a bunch of very passionate people who, who understand and believe in what we're doing and believe in the forward movement of, of our district. And, um, I know that we are all very, our hearts are, and souls are, sit in these seats with us. And there's not an opinion that sits up here that isn't valuable, um, from that space. So the questions that I ask are, are for clarity and, and also to represent, to represent the people that I was elected to represent, and to, to bring forward the concerns that I hear from, from those who were kind enough to put me in the seat. The first question I have is, is around the wording. Uh, it does echo some of the things you've already heard tonight. The thing that I hear most often, and maybe this does come back to Mr. Stanford and, and what this communication is going to look like as we move forward. And I can also say, it's hard for me to understand, as I'm getting ready to vote, exactly what I'm voting on by the descriptions that are in this package. And, and so maybe you can, so when a, a family looks at it and says, I see this dollar amount invested, but it has the same wording on multiple schools, but all with different dollar amounts. So it's very confusing for people to understand. And I was hoping that there could be some clarity provided as to how, um, how I might be able to get more clarity around schools even before I vote on Thursday. And then how families, should we as a board elect to bring this bond forward, be able to get more clarity around what these bond dollars will actually cover on these projects?
So I'm going to start, and then I'm sure going, I'm probably going to hand it off to a couple of folks here. So regarding the wording and, and why, you bring up a really good point. Like, why do you see the same description but different amounts? And the reason that is, is because every school is different, and all the, what we did was we identified deficiencies, you know, campus by campus, and we prioritized them, prioritized them in, in a way that focused, focused on security and safety as well as HVAC, and then moved the deficiencies that were tied to like finishes or paint to further back. And when we're, when we do these assessments and in the, in the schedule, you saw that we completed these in 2021, uh, certainly we've updated them based on the impact from Winter Storm Uri, as well as any projects that were completed in the 2017 bond program over the last two summers. And what you find is that different schools have different deficiencies that are in each of those timeframes, but also prioritization. What I mean is that School A may have, you know, two hundred thousand dollars in deficiencies because they have two hundred thousand dollars in broken, you know, life, safety, security, improvement, you know, um, needs, while another school that might be different in FCA score or just type of building would have a different cost. But the way that we worked with the BSC is we said, okay, what are, what are the things that are non-negotiable? And what the BSC agreed was that Year Zero, um, which are things that are broken now, Priority One and Two, which are life, safety, and security, and HVAC should be included. And then Years One through Five, Life, Safety, and Security. And so those two, um, items were, uh, included as deficiency, um, costs to every one of the schools from the beginning. That was one of the first things that the Bond Steering Committee did. And so that's why you see the same, you know, priorities, One and Two, and Years One through Five. Now, where that deviates slightly is in cases where we brought in that third priority, which is, we call it Code Three, but it's, it's what it is, is HVAC, um, improvements, Years One through Five. And that was only done at schools that had an FCA score of forty or lower at elementary schools, or fifty or lower at middle schools, which is why you see that adjustment for, for Covington. And so, so that's how those, the prioritizations around deficiencies get brought in. And then we had our partners, consulting partners, price out all of the priorities across all of the schools, at least the ones that we knew were likely to be considered. So if there was a safety, security, and resiliency, um, or transportation priority, including, um, circulation at Jordan, we priced that. And then a, as we worked with the BSC, we toggled it on and off, and that brought forward and get, got added. And then in the description, it was comma, circulation improvements. You know, comma, you know, if we brought in a security entry vegetable. So that's how, so that's how it got built up, but each of those are different amounts, and so the total obviously changes. And so I will tell you that when we look at deficiencies, we think of, um, it's replacing what's wrong there. Um, we are thinking about bundling, so there's some efficiencies, but we also know that the design hasn't started yet. And the design is actually going to allow those dollars to go further than we might expect. And so I think in the last couple of meetings, I was hesitant to say, you know, I'm not, I think it's, it would be, um, challenging to communicate, like, to, with extreme certainty, which elements of the HVAC system will be improved, but I can tell you with certainty that these deficiencies will be considered and much more if the design allows for it and the budgets hold. Uh, and as you get more and more projects, the project creates more and more opportunities to kind of, um, it becomes... it becomes synergistic, you know, because if you're going to be in a wall already addressing electrical plumbing and then the ceiling doing HVAC, and then, you know, you have other concerns, you're going to redo the vestibule, then all of a sudden, all of these things happening around the front of the building with a slightly, you know, increase in investment or slightly, you know, increase in budget, you can actually change the student experience. And so that is why the descriptions are the way they are. I think that we certainly can look at where appropriate and where we have certainty, being more definitive. And I think you heard me talk about like Crockett and, Crockett because visual performing arts and the athletic space. There are two things that we know for certain must be included in that modernization. Certainly, the HVAC improvements and all that will be addressed. But, and so that's why we have that, it's written in that way. And it's one of those things, when you build huge data sets, we need to have easy way to bring all of those dollars together and then have something that describes what those dollars are. But I agree with you, we can certainly have them be less, I don't know, like, engineerish or less, maybe tell a story opposed to exactly this, the way it's brought out. But I'll have to work with the team to get that done.
Well, and I think that, I guess my question of that even actually comes into the projects that are smaller in dollar. So those schools that didn't reach the threshold of jumping up into that next section of deficiencies, but still have significant or unique issues that they're trying to address, but the description is the same for all of those schools, but yet the dollar amount is different. And I have families saying, I don't understand.
Yeah.
And I don't, and trying to make sense in their mind of why the dollar amounts are different when the description and the dollar amounts are close-ish, but not the same.
Yeah.
And, but the descriptions are the same, but the dollar amounts are different. And so I think that's where I, I'm, there's, and I know the devil's in the details. I know some of it is harder to explain than others. And yet, with confidence, wanting to bring forward enough information for voters to be able to vote and for confident that they know what will happen at their school.
Yeah.
And so I guess maybe that's when that moves this way a little bit to Mr. Stanford. And yet, and still to me, as a voting member of the board on Thursday, to better understand what those are and how to communicate that to schools. Does that make sense? I don't feel like it does. I feel like I'm not.
No, it does make sense, Trustee Ashi. I think the challenge that we have is how much certainty is appropriate at this time and given what we know, right? Because what we know is really based on deficiencies, right? What's wrong? Now, when we think of a project, we're going to think about the project in a way that actually improves the student experience as well. And so, you know, with certainty, do we say the 300 wing plus the 400 wing will be addressed, given what we know? We have that level of detail. But does, we're also mindful of the fact that if we provide that, then it might limit us to only providing that, those improvements in that space. And so it's definitely a balance. We have all that information. We'll work with Jase and the team and try to improve it. But I understand the concern and I certainly, I had missed that. I hadn't really contemplated it in that way. But I can see how different dollar amounts with same descriptions might be misleading.
Well, and most likely, those smaller dollar amounts may not necessarily have a campus architectural team because you're dealing with HVAC, plumbing, and secure vestibules. Those are not the projects that are going to draw in, let's do the big campus master plan in order to figure that out. And so I think, again, that's where, when we, when we hear things that say, oh, well, but in the design process, was like, well, but is there a design process?
So it's not, it's not the same process. But I will tell you that, you know, our teams, when we think of these improvements, we are thinking of them in that way, 100%. We absolutely are. If we're going to be in a space, you know, we want to change the carpet if we can. We want to improve, you know, the finishes if we can. We want to do all of those things. So you are right, the size and the scale of the project doesn't always require a full campus architectural team that meets 30 times in a year. But I will tell you that our teams are very much thinking about that all the time, all the time. And oftentimes, you know, as a project develops and we work with the principal, there are things that we can bring into it that, you know, still meet the intent of the bond language, but, you know, kind of allow flexibility for future improvements or for just a way to think about the improvement differently. And again, so when you say just plumbing, you know, plumbing deficiencies in a restroom, you know, we're thinking about, you know, the tile, you know, like, what is the counter going to look like? The space, the access, the egress, because all of that's part of the restroom. And again, the plumbing is going to be the most expensive part of it. But we do account for all of that, and we do think about it in that way. But you are right, we don't have full campus architectural teams on a smaller projects.
I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, I do. I mean, to the, to the, there are a couple of challenges for communicating in greater specificity. One is that Matias wants to, I'm sorry, Mr. Segura wants to maintain greater flexibility so he can do more later. And I think that's laudable. My most proximate problem right now is our bond council. They are trying to prevent any liability problems. And so they, they really like it when we stay vague, and we're constantly pushing against that. As a matter of practice, though, given those constraints, we are in communications, there's a challenge between, there's a conflict between feature and the benefit. And a lot of times, we get caught up, especially when we're doing all this work, we want to talk about the work, and we don't talk about the benefit. And the benefit here is how does it change student experience? And to the extent possible, and to when we're allowed to be more specific, we want to talk about how this work will affect, will change the experience on that campus. And you'll see on the example one sheet, this is a very crude way of expressing that, but showing how the scores will change after the work is done. Is some at least measure of, it reminds me of, you know, minor league baseball prospects that they have a 70, you know, their fastball is rated a 60, and you can project that in, you know, a certain way. Just as a crude measure of understanding how it's going to change the health of the campus and what it's like there. I think last meeting, we talked about the process of creating the Campus One pagers. There is a couple of days there when what we're going to do is we're going to take his spreadsheet and we're going to, I joke that we're translating it into English. I think that is what we're going to be doing then, is trying to make it so that people understand how meaningful the work is. And then it's not just, I'm seeing this everywhere, why is, what does it mean to me? So that's, that's our goal.
Trustee Ashi, to your point, we've gotten this feedback. I think Trustee Wagner gave similar feedback. And so we're conscientious of it. We actually sat and visited about it today. Just trying to think, like you said, timeline wise, when can we go to make those alterations to make it more specific? So it's more meaningful to the communities that are observing it. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we are talking about that internally.
And then I have one other question that kind of relates to the smaller projects, if you will, and what I call the HGTV moment, where they go in to do the renovation work and they pull down the wall and everybody goes, huh! And they go to commercial because something terrible has happened because they've uncovered something that they didn't know was there. What does that look like for a school that we know is older, that already has a really low FCA score, that we know is challenged, but is not slated for a full modernization? And we get in there and find out these problems are because we finally have pulled down the wall to do some of those bigger things that we are allotting some more dollars for, and we find that there's more going on there than can be handled with what's there.
Well, there are two ways that we would handle this. The first is, is, you know, we carry contingency within every phase of the project. We carry it in design, we carry it in pre-construction, we carry it in construction, we carry it in owner side and construction side services, as well as closeout. And the reason I think that's important is because there are unforeseen conditions at every step along the way. You know, we might be, we might do a test, you know, like you said, and might find asbestos that we didn't know existed before. Then we have to spend dollars to adjust the design, right? We have to develop an abatement fee. We have to pay for the contractor to abate the facility. And so we typically carry a higher percent of contingency within a project if it is a renovation because you are going to run into those things. It is going to happen, but we have budgeted for it. So that's, that's kind of the internal process. Now, in the event we uncover something that is, can't be covered within the allotted budget, then we would have to notify the bond steering, sorry, the Community Bond Oversight Committee, report to them, and we would let them know, you know, we try to give, when we present to them, we let them know things that we're kind of tracking, things that we may need to bring back to them. We would have a plan and say, you know, we would need to make a, an adjustment from the general contingency budget over to make this, to make this change. The CBOC then would give their approval or not, or they would notify us that it's okay to proceed, and then we would notify the board. Again, that would be, you know, in addition, that would be kind of a larger than anticipated change. Like, that would be a pretty big change. I will tell you, we know a lot about our schools, probably more than we ever have in the past. Our documents are better than they've ever been. We have now two cycles of assessments. We have projects that have occurred. And every time, this is not what's great, but it's also kind of what's okay about, I should never say okay. But with documents that track things like asbestos, they don't age out, right? It's an archive that keeps being built, but asbestos doesn't go away, right? And so you build a document or a library that tells the true story of a building in that way because we have so much, because we've been able to organize ourselves in a way that, you know, just allows us to understand about our, much more about our buildings. We don't run into those issues as much, but that's how we would handle it if it was a bigger issue. But for, you know, renovation projects, we are carrying a higher contingency amount. And that's, that's pretty typical of these types of projects in the industry. Like, you just, you're gonna open something up and find something you never knew existed. That's gonna happen, happens all the time.
And for those projects, and I am probably thinking specifically about the one middle school and the three elementary schools who fell below that threshold and therefore were, the administrative proposal increased their dollar amounts. And yet, none of those schools were moved into a modernization space. Do you, I'm trying to figure out the way that I want to ask the question with, because I'm not, it's a question I'm asked a lot, is what happens when we get in there with these larger dollar amounts to try to do more to fix, and we find out it's just a much bigger problem than we ever saw? And we obviously know that it's a bigger problem because we're already saying, we recognize this FCA score is lower, and yet we're not going to that next jump. And I understand why we're not going to the next jump because dollars are finite. And so then it becomes a trade-off, right? It becomes a, where are, where are the places that we might be able to save a dollar here, there, to be able to reallocate? And being knowledgeable about the facility condition scores and what those mean, I know what it means to be below a 40. And I know that, what that condition represents. And so the next question that it then leads me into is, I am often asked if we have a school that we know is below 40 and they qualified for a renovation or a modernization, and yet they aren't on here as a project. And how are we providing the why for the community on that?
Yeah, Trustee Ashi, I'll, I mean, I think that's one of the things that the Bond Steering Committee staff, we've all been working through. You know, this process was, was different. It was intentional to really focus on the equity by design model. And so for us, you know, the Bond Steering Committee has made a recommendation, and we are trying to identify some adjustments that allow for that kind of burden on the general operating budget to be softened, which is why I think the next grouping of projects, you heard me talk about HVAC systems, Years One through Five, is a meaningful place to look, and it's actually the next logical place that you would look, is because that's where a lot of our deficiencies are, right? They're just in HVAC, electrical, plumbing, and so, and mechanical. And so one of the questions that comes up a lot, just to me candidly, is, so if this school gets an investment and the FCA goes up, and then in the next bond cycle, a school that didn't get the investment, their FCA score goes down, you know, does a flip occur? And now all of a sudden, a school that was likely to be next in the modernization kind of sequence now not? And that, that happened this time, you know?
Yes, it did.
And that's going to continue to happen. And I don't know how we prevent that. I think what we have to do is be honest about the work and communicate what the expectation is, which is for all students to be in improved spaces, period. And it's going to take multiple cycles to get there. But specifically, I think that's, that's a challenge. I mean, that is one of the more difficult things to kind of to tie back to both past work and future work, you know, because that will happen. You know, our goal is to improve the facilities and the FCA score will improve. And if, and it's almost to fault of our own, if we're going to spend dollars, you hear me say about it over and over again, if you're going to spend dollars in a campus, do everything possible to try and improve the student experience, even if it's a small thing. You know, sometimes we can get furniture into a space that might otherwise be able to get it. And we can do that with these projects in some instances. But then again, that moves the FCA score and the SA score up. So it is a very valid point, and we do think about that a lot.
So.
I know, it's not like the.
It's still not an answer. I appreciate you, Matias, but that's still not an answer.
I know, I know. I just, you know, I think we would go back to the process and we would communicate, you know, why the investment is being made in this way. And that's how, that's what we would, we would tell them, the truth.
And we're prepared to do that. We're prepared to go into the, particularly, like I said, those schools whose, who we know their, their buildings are the, on the lower end. And there was some expectation, good, bad, or indifferent. There was expectation from the 2017 bond that these schools would be in the next cycle. And so that's where I'm getting, why? Why am I not? That was my understanding based on all the communication that we've had. And it's, I am hearing frustration from people because of the lack of the why. The lack of the, if I, I feel like if there was a why attached to that, that there's a lot of the community that could get on board and understand. But there's, there's not a why that's being given. And so that, that's the space that I'm coming from. And in representing the communities that.
I didn't understand that.
That wasn't me.
Yeah, I think, Trustee Ashi, you know, we'd want it to be intentional about engaging with that community, you know, talking and sharing space with them and communicating with them face to face as to the process, you know, and that, you know, the process started with identifying, you know, historically leadership communities, identifying high opportunity campuses to begin the work. And that is kind of how this process started. But we also acknowledge that there are investments that need to be made because they are impacting our general operating budget in a very meaningful way. Like, it's hurting us. And so this plan is an attempt to try to remedy some of those most, the repeat offenders, the ones that we continue to have issues with. And those schools are, this is a step in trying to address that in a way. But we can, I think we're going to have to do intentional engagement. We're going to have to sit down with them and take them through the process and just be honest about the work that's been completed to date. And then, you know, any feedback that y'all might have on what to consider the next time the board goes through this process. Even 2017, you know, even prior to that, 2013, you know, things change, you know? And people talk about, what did this school get, you know, five years ago? You know, if the facility condition changes significantly, or the population changes, or the program changes, that all influences the next recommendation. And so what needs to be preserved and like held, you know, static? And then what, you know, should be explored again? I don't know, but I think that conversation is going to be an important one.
Thank you. And I will hold you to that and get you to come out to some of the communities that have these questions. The last thing I'm going to talk about is the phasing, because we've been talking a lot about that. And I know, I understand the hesitation and I understand, I understand the hesitation of not wanting to have any phased schools. I 100% get that. That's why I said I would not support a bond that had elementary schools in phases because I think that elementary schools is where we should make sure we're doing full modernizations. And I stand behind what else I said, which was, I do believe that our secondary schools should be phased. And they should be phased for the reasons of the larger number of students. They are more flexible as older students. They can adapt to things better than others. And so I do appreciate that by changing some of the modernizations to partials, we allow ourselves to touch more schools. We allow ourselves to put Navarro and McCullum and Crockett and Clifton and lots of other schools that we're not, we were not going to be able to touch in the other way. That being said, I'm now going to bring up something that I know will be very controversial. And yet I bring it up in an effort to see if there's still opportunity for us to touch more schools or to potentially reallocate other dollars in Travis, in Travis High School. And I bring it up in that I know that it currently has approximately 1,200 students enrolled. And we are, that is my, my understanding that we would be building it out to 1,800 students. Is, I'm, I'm wanna make sure that I am stating that correctly. An 1,800 student capacity.
I, I am, I'm almost certain that that's it because I've gone back and forth with my team on this, but I wanna give them a second to tell me via my phone.
Okay. So while they're telling you by phone, in the same kind of vein of a phased opportunity, would it be possible to build Travis to potentially a 1,600 with the potential of a phase, should they need to later, to grow? In order to reduce the project size, but still allowing room for growth to move from 1,200 to 1,600? And yet be able to phase that project to free up more dollars to then put into, to other projects? And I, I ask that just as, again, in an effort to be able to, because there's always going to be somebody on the cut line. There's always gonna be somebody who we really want in the bond project. And yet they, they fall just on that cut line. And I would love to be able to get as many schools on the, the side with a phase or a full modernization as we can. And so I'm wondering if that is a possibility even in the campus master plan? Where again, it's still a full modernization. It would just be building the school to 1,600 instead of 1,800 with, with the understanding that in the campus master plan, you could, you could account for an addition as the school grows. So that it is phased, just like all of our other secondary schools. And as somebody who has a secondary school, who received a, a phase one in the 2017 bond and is not receiving a phase two, even though the need is still, there's still need there for attention to that campus. I, I, I get the worry and I get the frustration. And again, in the interest of trying to touch as many schools as we could.
So I did confirm with the team that the current budget is, is actually at 1,600.
Okay.
The first iteration of it, it was a little bit higher, if you don't recall, it was, it was actually 265 million. I'm, actually, I think it was two, a little bit north of that. That was contemplated in 1,800. And so one of the things I'll, I think is important to note is that whenever you build a high school in this way, there are things that are gonna be common, whether it's 1,600 or 1,800. And the gymnasium, you know, the, the fine arts spaces, the athletic spaces, the cafeteria. There are spaces that are gonna be held true and the, the changes are in the studios themselves. And so one of the things we certainly want to be mindful of is that, you know, as we deliver, cross my fingers, Travis Early College High School, we'd wanna also consider the fact that Aitkins High School, just to the south, is experiencing some capacity challenges or like will, likely will continue. And certainly with an investment at Crockett and Travis High School, you might be able to draw some of that pressure off Aitkins High School. We can certainly look at it and, and see there's a refinement. As far as 18 versus 16, I don't know that that would contemplate a phased approach. It would just be a slightly full modernization that would contemplate a future expansion, which is what we wanna do anyway, everywhere. But we can look at that, but I, I do understand at this point that the current budget is set at 1,600. But you're right, at one point, it was a little bit north of that. And, and as far as phasing, you know, I, I, I do believe that of all the high schools we have, I'm not sure there's one that actually lends itself better for a full modernization than Travis Early College High School. And, and that is simply because of its orientation on the site, its proximity to Old Torf, and, and just the setback that it allows you to build it in that sequence. I don't, I mean, it's not gonna be afforded to you at any other high school I can think of. That might be the last one we do that way, to be honest, after we do, after we complete, well, after Eastside Early College High School. I just, it's just, they're huge.
Well, and I just asked that question because the, the number in the proposal that we've seen from draft proposal A to draft proposal B to the administration proposal has not changed for Travis.
So when we first, well, I think, because what's happening in my mind is I'm thinking about, like, all the iterations with the bond steering committee and, like, the iterations. So I know at one point when we first proposed it, it was actually 272, I'll, I'll get the number. And so we did refine it, but we can look at that. I, I would say that my recommendation was to, would be to keep it as a full modernization. We can look at perhaps an efficiency and planning and sequence. But I wouldn't want to really explore anything south of 1,600 just because of the, what we believe will be a positive exchange of students between Aitkins and Crockett. And so, but we can certainly explore that further and, and see if there are any, any recommendations that come out of it.
I appreciate that, it sounds like you've considered it. I just, I, to me, it just, and I, to be very clear, because I don't want people to hear something I'm not saying. I'm not saying not to do the full modernization. My question is, is there a way to do a full modernization that would allow for some growth? But then also add, allow for a potential for an expansion later? So I called it a phase and that's my fault. But what I'm, what I was wondering, is there a way to do the full modernization? And yet do it in a way that would allow for a, a addition or something like that? That would then free up additional dollars to be put in other schools?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get with our team and, and just see, you know, are there any assumptions that we might need to explore further to see if that can be adjusted? I, I don't wanna to mislead anybody and, and say that we would find immense savings just because a lot of the dollars would be tied up in those things that are gonna be there regardless of it's 1,400, 1,600, or 1,800 students. But we can certainly look at that, meet with, you know, different groups and, you know, within our team and, and see if there's anything there.
Well, because if you, even for some of, some schools, if a, a small dollar amount change can be quite impactful. That we could, we could place in some of our schools that we know are drains on our maintenance and operation budget. So again, in the interest of just trying to, to allow for as, as many schools to, to receive that benefit as possible. And I know and appreciate the uniqueness of Travis and the challenges that that site has, being so close to Old Torf and so close to I-35 and yet having that space behind it by which they can, they can build and not have to actually swing students or ask teachers to move. Even though I know it will still be very loud. And I would like to thank all of the Merkison teachers who managed through teaching while that was happening on the campus. Because I know how extremely difficult that is and how loud it is and disruptive to the learning day. So those were just some thoughts that I have as far as understanding that my goal too is to get us through as many completed projects as possible. And if we had an infinite amount of money, then we'd be in phase two in several schools that we aren't able to be in now. And so again, I do appreciate and understand the difficulty in the decision to move to the phased approach and I support it as it does allow for more of our comprehensive high schools and other places to be addressed. And I will stop there for now.
Trustee Foster?
So as, as a researcher, as a professor, as a scholar, there's moments of excitement when what you've researched, what you've read, what you've found lives into reality and you see this validation of, of the scholarship upon which you stand. But then at times, that's also incredibly depressing. A bunch of y'all know who Derrick Bell was. He was a really brilliant legal scholar. And he talked about, and he argued hundreds of civil rights cases, lots of DSEG stuff in education. And he was optimistic about that when he was doing that work in the 50s and 60s and all that. But then he came to recognize the intractability of our problems and the permanence of our problems. And he came up with this notion of interest convergence. And what he said is that things won't ever get better for black folk unless something's in it for white folk. And I'm talking about race because I'm not ashamed to talk about race. I'm black, I'm white, I'm a whole bunch of things, we're a diverse board. So in a case like this, we went through a process and we're 140 years deep in public education in Austin and we've never had equity. We've never come close to equity, we've never, it's just not been what we've been about. And so here we, at a bond steering committee that proceeded intentionally with equity by design, producing equity by design. And they came up with a set of recommendations. And what I said at our last board meeting and what I said at a couple of workstations before that is that watch the end game, watch the end, not the end game, but watch the end of this. That's when the inequity will creep in. And what Derrick Bell would say is, white people will only get behind something that's gonna benefit black and brown folk if it's something in it for them. And that's okay, because everybody just wants great stuff for their kids. So there's an okay aspect of it. But the problem is we're trying to undo over a century of deeply ingrained inequities. And so when we went from a draft bond proposal B, we went from an A to a B, which got bigger to include more stuff. Some of us liked some of the stuff that was in it, some of us didn't like everything that was in it, but it included more stuff. And now we've gone from a B to a working draft that doesn't include more money, but rather swaps somewhere. And so what I see is the swap, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything in terms of mean-spiritedness, racism, anything like that. I'm not trying to go there. I am pointing out that Burnett, which is 90% Hispanic and 6% black, goes from a number in proposal B of 157 million down to 80 in this new draft, so 77 million drop. LBJ, which is 65% Hispanic, 31% black, drops from 115 to 60, so it loses 55 million. Northeast, which is 81% Hispanic, 15% black, drops 56 million. Oak Spring, Pecan Spring Elementary Schools, majority, minority, both reduced capacity. Where in some places, our logic is make the school smaller because that's what's gonna help enrollment. In some places, it's make the school bigger and that's what's gonna help enrollment. And so I'm, I'm getting a little confused with our logics, but one way or another, we're shaving off 13 million out of Oak Springs, Pecan Springs. So you got 77 million, 55 million, 56 million, 13 million, 13 million, it kinda goes on from there. Navarro, which is in my district, actually came up 19 million in this new one, so that's pretty cool, I guess. But where does this money that's cut out go? It goes to Anderson, which is majority white. It goes to Austin High, which is majority white. It goes to Bear Creek, which is majority white. It goes to McCallum, which is majority white. It goes to O'Henry, which is majority white. So I've asked for like a, a better parsing out of the numbers in case I'm wrong. But what I'm literally seeing is money shifting from black and brown to white in this next proposal. I am strongly in favor of the work that the bond steering committee did as is. And if you wanna do anything, well, no, I'm, I'm happy where they are. I am not and will not support a last-minute shift of over $100 million that looks, unless I'm wrong, and somebody can tell me I'm wrong, is a direct shift from black and brown to white. That's not what I wanna be about, I will not support it, I don't have a question.
Justie Boswell?
All right. So I'm gonna follow Kevin with a slightly different perspective hearing and, and really valuing what everyone has said, really appreciating what everyone has said and, and starting with real gratitude for all the work that has been done and the foundation that the long-range planning committee, the bond steering committee have given us. And, and with real hope that the long-range planning committee is going to continue the work that began. And come in where, when I am looking at what's been presented to us, I also am really thinking about what I see as my role as a trustee and a fiduciary to take the recommendations and then ask some additional questions. And, and deeply valuing what's been brought to us and knowing that we have a duty to care for students. We have a duty to ask what we haven't done right in the past, what we continue to not always do right. And we have a real duty to care for our funds, which is not exciting to most of us who aren't Mr. Ramos maybe, but deeply important. And, and that I see taking care of our funds really serving our students in the end. And when I hear that we have spent $12 million cobbling together air conditioners and patching roofs in, in schools all across our district. And when I know that that's enough to give every teacher in our district a 3% raise, I do feel like we have to ask questions about whether we take the recommendations wholesale or whether we look a little more deeply at where our biggest costs are coming from. And I, I do appreciate that the draft that has been brought to us tonight, that when it does diverge from the bond steering committee recommendation, it's not about who's loudest, it's not about who's squeakiest, but it does that using strategic, thoughtful, and data-driven reasons. Looking at where our biggest costs are, looking at where the facilities are draining resources that we know would better be put in other places. And I, I appreciate the efficiency that is being brought to big critical needs projects at our high schools. Austin High is certainly one of them and something that I've been hoping to see. But I know, you know, Navarro was one, Crockett is one, that it's, it's bringing efficiency that as long as we're disrupting work, you know, disrupting campus life, disrupting these spaces, that we are doing so in a way that really will impact our student experience. And, you know, I know that's a different balance than some of my colleagues would choose. But it's a balance that I really appreciate the thought and the work that has gone into it. So I just want to express kind of gratitude and, and my perspective on that. Even though it is in some cases shifting from where the steering committee chose to focus to some buildings that have, have needs as well and communities that have needs as well. And, and still appreciate that the foundation and the heart of this, as I see it, and I understand some might disagree, remains deeply focused on communities that, that need the most and that have received the least. Matthias, you mentioned that this is an anti-school closure plan. And I represent some small campuses, including some that have been on past closure lists. And I would love to just kind of hear more about your thinking about that and, and what you meant when you said that.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Boswell. I think, you know, one of the things that we've learned over the last couple of years is that, you know, there are different ideas on how to address a building capacity. Back when we were going through school closures, I'm sure all of us remember that, back when we were planning the 2017 bond program, there was a lot of conversations around tailoring the designs to the community needs and the programmatic needs. And that having a school below 520 was okay. And that the real concern was having a policy that would be brought forward to the board that would ensure that a facility that performed at 520-student, fully utilized capacity and one that performs at a little less than 400 are both properly staffed. And then we fast forward to this process. And there's a different thought that came about from some folks and that was, you know, if you don't build it to 522, then the school doesn't have room to grow. What we don't wanna do is to put What we don't want to do is to put any campus at risk, which means that we don't want to draw one campus base from another, and we don't want, we want to, but we also want to create enough space for a campus to grow in the building that it has. And so when we looked at the campuses that were being modernized, really only two, not all of them, fit that kind of description, Pecan Springs and Oak Springs. And the thought there was, you know, you could give them a completely modernized facility and plan for expansion, like absolutely plan for expansion, and that solution would work for that community, and it would work for those needs. And we have many other small schools within the district, many other small schools. And so if that strategy is one the board wants to adopt, then our goal would be to implement that elsewhere. It wouldn't be tied to any district or to any area of town. But in that way, you, at a macro level, have more control over the denominator that is used to calculate utilization, right, as a whole. And when you think about 10 or 15 schools together, and you think about seats, which are something we have to think about, any opportunity we have a chance to tailor a solution, we'd like to consider it. And so the thought was, if we only make 522s across the board, then you might inadvertently be putting a school in a position to have to consider, or the board to have to consider that difficult decision at some point in the future, because either that school draws from students around it, or that school's now, that campus is now in a school that's only, you know, it's only being utilized 30% or 40%. So that was the thought process behind it. Again, things have changed over time, but I have heard with certainty from a lot of folks that it's okay to have smaller campuses, as long as they're properly supported. And from a facilities perspective, we can develop and create a beautiful, like, modernized facility that fits very well on these sites. And so that was the intent behind the plan. We didn't want any campus or any school to feel like they were compromised at some point in the future because of the design decisions that were being made at this point. So that's the kind of thought process behind it.
Trustee Boswell, just to add to that, the fact that those buildings will be prepared for additional students, if that should happen, and designed to, you know, again, to accommodate that growth, and also, like you said, applying this as a practice across our city where we have challenges like this. So we did not want to send the message that, you know, that school closures were something that was pending, or something that was planned for, and so we are planning for accommodating growth as needed with these buildings and the design.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mays and Mr. Segura, both. And I do, you know, just looking at the areas that I represent, if we built a couple of schools at 522, at some of our smaller campuses, we would very quickly be beyond the capacity of all of the elementary school students who are expected to live in District 5 for the next 10 years, and we would be back at a closure conversation in that area as a result of that. So I really appreciate the thought with that, and I would like to just ask Dr. Mays that you, I would love for the board and the administration to work together to bring some thoughtful policies about staffing at smaller campuses, so we know that they have everything they need to be successful, and what that looks like for a librarian, for an AP, for those positions that sometimes are shared, that we might want to put those investments into some campuses with smaller enrollments regardless of the size of the building, to make sure they're getting that support they need. So I would just appreciate that conversation, really following this conversation.
Yes, ma'am. I see Ms. Stevens back there, so I think she heard you.
Great, thank you for that, and thank you, Ms. Stevens, for that as well. Mr. Segura, I have another question. We are hearing increasing interest, I think, about the environmental impact of our district, about schools generally. I know President Rodriguez has talked about it, I know a lot of people in our community are reaching out about it. I know that you're piloting some electric school buses right now, you know, our transportation, our facilities have a big footprint, and that also gives us a big opportunity to make choices that really start making a difference, that start improving things. And I know as a district, we have a long and deep commitment, and groups that are doing very good work on this, and I know that we could do more. So I understand the facilities that you have been designing and building are designed with environmental efficiency in mind, and that they are performing, the ones that were modernized in 2017 are performing as they were intended, reducing our environmental cost and that utility cost, you said is our second-biggest line item in the presentation. And I would just love to hear more, a little bit, about how that shows up in this bond, and what you expect to see as a result if the modernizations go forward.
So we would expect to see a significant improvement in efficiency as far as an operations perspective. You know, one of the things I'll tell you is, you know, old buildings are leaky, the HVAC systems are inefficient, they draw power, they can't be controlled correctly, which means they're operating at the wrong times of day. So by modernizing as many square feet as we are in this plan, we would expect to see a significant reduction in utility cost, and certainly all of these schools would improve as far as either sustainability, you know, rating, depending on how you want to consider that, which is what we've seen in the 2017 bond program. You know, the modernized facilities go from really being at the bottom of the lowest quartile to the top of the first, and that would be the case in all of these. Again, just to remind everybody, you know, for us, you know, we look at lead certification, but we also acknowledge that, you know, we need to be mindful of that, and there are different requirements for different school types, and really the community has a part in kind of helping us figure out what's the appropriate threshold to get to. But as far as, you know, other things, including solar, all of our facilities are solar-ready, meaning that we lay the conduit, and if the dollars, if we have dollars in the projects, then we certainly will explore adding panels and other types of improvements like that. Things as simple as metering, there's just a lot that goes into it. But I will say that, you know, as an organization, it is a priority of ours. We have dozens of campuses now that have solar on them. Every school that's been delivered in 2017 bond program is incredibly efficient and is solar-ready, and we would only expect to kind of increase or even like heighten the bar, you know, and so I think you'll find that to be the case in this program with certainty. And I would also say, it's not just the modernized facilities. You know, you think about Nelson Field, no, sorry, Nelson Terminal, you know, that's a building that we pay for. It is very inefficient. It is very costly. The same thing is true of other sites as well, including, you know, like, not necessarily the full modernizations, but when you think about the HVAC improvements or the open-space classroom designs, you know, that's going to change how that building performs. And so they're not classified as modernizations, but those will also have a significant impact in how efficient we are, which is obviously one thing that's our goal, to reduce burden off our general operating budget. So, you know, thank you for that question.
Yeah, thank you for that answer. I think that's really an exciting piece of this, that is certainly not the same kind of direct educational, daily impact on our student experience, but definitely has profound impact in a lot of different ways, and really represents our values as a larger community in a lot of ways. And so it's exciting to hear how that is working, and that it is working just as intended. So thank you for that. And then I have just one communication request, and just something to share that, you know, I know, no matter what shape this takes, if we move forward with a bond, and no matter how many people we're able to say yes to, and I'll share gratitude again to the steering committee for thinking big and really coming to us with the idea of a tax increase that does let us reach more communities and do deeper work. No matter who we're saying yes to, and no matter how many schools we're saying yes to with big projects, we know that we still are in a position where we have to say no to a lot of campuses that we know have really major needs, and to cut off those big, you know, big HVAC projects and roofing projects and electrical plumbing projects at campuses that have a score of a 40 or a 50, if that's what we move forward with, we know we're saying no to a lot that have a 41 or a 51, and that have really real ongoing needs that people are living in those buildings with all the time. And I'm very excited that this does reach so many that do have deep and expensive needs, and that we're still asking a lot of other communities to wait. And as someone who represents an area of town with many of our oldest schools, some of them 100 years old, and have, having had a lot of conversations with a lot of communities this time, saying, you know, it's not, I know you were on a list in 2017, and it's not going to be your campus's turn this time, but here's what is coming to your campus, and here's why the decision has been made, and reminding people that we know the need is there, and that our plan as an institution, as an organization, is to eventually get to each of these campuses, that that needs to remain our long-term plan, and making sure that we're acknowledging that and still keeping that in the mid-distance as we go through with that. And I think that's an important part of the communication as well, that not now doesn't mean not at all. Thank you.
Sorry. So I think all of the trustees have gone through one round of questions except for myself, and then we're going to do one more round after this, just to kind of let folks know. So I have, so I have a couple of comments, or, so one is, I just want to kind of put this in context. One is, I want to talk about three potential motions out of a spirit of not surprising you all, in addition to the bond package on Thursday. Two potential policy recommendations that I think we have to talk from governance perspective, but I wanted to raise up because of the bond issue, and then one request for you all. So the first one is, I think that the board, and we'll work with our board council on these motions, but I think it's important to have a motion, I think, Mr. Matias, as you mentioned, you've heard some of my colleagues talk about electric buses, and a motion to support prioritizing electric buses as long as we have federal matching dollars, because I think that will maximize the efficiency of getting to carbon-neutral. That's one. I think two is the consideration of a motion around construction standards resolution, which I think we'll work with our board council to discern whether that's something that the board wants to support. And I think the third one, and we'd have to talk to our board council about a motion around the contingency surplus funds as well, to see if we need to do that or not. So that's the three motions that I think we have to do in addition to the consideration of the bond, and I know that we're not done with the bond discussion. Secondly, there's a couple of policy discussions that are kind of floating out there that I just want to put a place marker on that are relevant to this bond. One of them is the consideration of a policy around directing this district to become carbon-neutral by 2040, 2050, whatever the right date is, but I think there's some discussion to be had and a whole discernment around that, but I think that's important to raise up. And I think the last one is a policy suggestion around going back and updating the bond steering committee to become the bonded facilities oversight steering committee. But I think there's a lot, like I said, there's a lot that comes from all these discussions around all this stuff. So the one request I have, I think, because we've been, we're so close, yet we're kind of hearing all of these kind of discussion points, all valid ones, I think, from my colleagues and learning from every single one of them. And by the way, I should say, thank you, Mr. Ramos, for the education around the tax rates and around the impact of the potential for the one-cent tax rate, which won't go into effect until 2024. So if I have, I've said it to some of my colleagues, but I haven't said it publicly, I support going big on this bond package, and in that spirit, I'm just wondering if you can provide the board, as I'm listening to the conversation, can you provide the board with a potential of what it would look like to honor the bond steering committee recommendation at the $2.25 billion level, plus adding the administration proposal, and what that would mean? Because I think one of the things that I appreciate about your presentation is, not only do we have the lowest tax rate for the school district, two, that one-cent tax rate doesn't go into effect until 2024, and we know that not only is there a 9.1% inflation, but on the other side, Austin has such an incredible economy that's growing, that there is a potential for us not to even have to engage in that one-cent tax rate increase. Not a guarantee, but considering the economy that we're at. So if you were to combine the bond steering committee and the administration proposal, what that would mean for a net decrease in the taxes, right, because of the decrease? And might that potentially be a passable bond, a supported bond for the board? And here I'm talking to my board colleagues, as we've all had different discussions about what we're trying to discern as we have an additional, tonight's an additional night, considering that this was the original time that we were going to vote for the bond, since I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it again, we're 89 days until the November election, Thursday will be 87 days. And obviously, we do have until August 22 to call the bond, but that is, seems a very, very short time period to do that. So that's the one request, the two policy considerations, and the three motions that we might have on Thursday. So I, and I know I just asked you that, so I don't expect an answer back from you all. I know you might need just a little bit of time for that. What I want to do now is go back for a second round of questions, and then see if that will allow us to complete our meeting, or if not, we can go for another round, if the will of the board says. And I'm trying to remember who I called on first. Was it, well, it was Trustee Boswell who passed. So I don't know if you want to pass again, Trustee Boswell?
I just ask questions, and so far I've asked everything that I think I need to ask. I would love to reserve the right to ask another question if I come up with one by the time you get back to the end of the line. Thanks.
Awesome. Trustee Sabata?
So I, I've heard that people define equity, it's not the same definition, everybody's defining it different ways, right? But AISD created a department, the Equity Department. So, Dr. Holly, could you tell us what that means for AISD? Because I think it's important for the community to understand, when we talk about equity, this is what we talk about. So for the department, what is the role? What is, how would you tell the community what AISD is trying to do with equity and creating this culture of equity?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Sabata. First of all, I just want to commend, one of the reasons I came to AISD is because the board, back in 2019, adopted a definition from the National Equity Project, which means that every student gets what they need. And it also means that we recognize the gifts of the students. Also means that we pay a lot of attention to the unique needs of students, right? So we know that all students don't necessarily need the same thing. And so our district has been very focused on paying attention to unique needs, and all of this, the other thing that our board has done that's just fantastic, is to look at disaggregated data to see which student groups are not currently benefiting from what we do. And so equity is all about making sure every student, regardless of their background, disability. So sometimes people think of equity all around race, but it also includes disability, it also includes language. So we talk, and it also includes neurodiversity, the different ways that students acquire language and information. And so we have a broad scope on equity, but the focus really is about students and their unique needs. And that's probably as simple as we can make it, I could do a whole workshop, but that's not what you asked for, so. But that's- that's, but do know, before I came here, there was a commitment from this board with that particular definition.
Right. And so when the advisory, the bond advisory group began to work on this, they mentioned that's the lens they started working from. It wasn't from what was left over undone from the previous bond, but it was going to just look at, how do we make, ensure that students have the facility, the learning space, the safety and safe environment to learn? And they came up with those proposals. So I just want the community to understand in the whole district, it's not about being north, south, east and west. It's not about our color. We really talk, talking about how do we ensure that every child in our district is getting the best education experience in a very safe learning environment? And that is how so many schools in my district are on that list because I would, because they have been struggling and doing their best, staff and, and, and students to learn in facilities that were horrific, are horrific, to the point that they were identified as complete, complete rebuilt, right? So I invite schools on the west side, walk with me in my campuses, so we can begin to understand what this bond is about. It's not about you and me. It's about our students and providing that safe learning environment that they deserve and have been neglected for years. So I appreciate that definition so that everyone understands that that's the work that is leading this. We're leading it through that lens because it was brought to our attention when we had the pandemic, how unequal our students were being taught, the inequities in our district. And so this was a step moving forward to try to make this bond an opportunity to bring some equity in our district. So I appreciate all that you do, Dr. Holly, Chief Matias, Ramos, because that is, that was the charge and you did it. And we have dissected, we have allowed a lot of dissecting to happen that has taken us away from what we want to begin to create and instill in our district, district-wide. So I think the other thing is that I've heard tonight was, yes, we want as many schools to have it, but quantity does not exceed quality. So I believe investing in the original plan where there's full modernizations, that, that needs to happen because, for the reasons I already mentioned. So the other thing was, my, my battery is running out. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Oh, that, Mr. Jason in Communications, how, I think it's important that we really think about how we explain support for equity and being able to be open about equity, because sometimes people see it as a bad word, because they're defining it different. So just, you know, I just want to mention that and see what, you know, begin thinking about that, because we're all going to have to, once we vote, to go out and do our work. And I want to be able to all speak the same language. There was a question on, on the, on the, this was that there was a listing for a Southeast Elementary School, which surprised me because Ask was a Southeast High School. We already have that land. And in the proposal, it had purchased land for Southeast Elementary School. So I just wanted to get clarity on that one. Thank you.
Absolutely, trustee Sabata. And before I speak to that, I do want to make sure the board is, is clear that the only modernization that was whole, that has been made partial in the, in this plan is Burnett. Northeast Early College High School and LBJ were, were not going, even with the previous amount, would not complete the school. You would still need another phase after that. But as far as the investment, the $5 million allocated for a Southeast Elementary School, one of the things that we know, we have known for quite some time, is that Southeast Austin is growing very quickly. The Goodnight Ranch development has been exceeding all timelines and milestones regarding development, single family homes. And so one of the things we wanted to ensure was that we had capacity for a future elementary school. We have identified that as a need. One of the things I will tell you is that once a site is acquired for a certain purpose, it cannot be repurposed necessarily, at least easily, to address another need. And you may have recalled this conversation around Blaser several years ago. We do have funds in the bond to progress the work around the Southeast High School. Again, progressing the planetary designs, doing utility work, all of that. But we do believe that there is a need to secure land for a Southeast Elementary School, especially given the growth, the growth around, again, Goodnight Ranch. And if you think about the orientation of the schools, Blaser and Southeast Austin has limited opportunity to expand to the south. And Palm, just to the north, is like kind of right tucked up against it. So we're going to have a concern there, a very real concern. And there isn't another area to pull from. It's kind of just tucked in the corner of AISD. So that is why we think that dollar mount is appropriate. Again, it's, it's one that we think would get us in a favorable position in negotiating. But again, again, we would, it would require some, some work to get it done. But that's the logic behind it.
So are you saying that the Langford and Houston and all those others, Allison, they're all full modernization still?
Houston, all, all of the schools that are listed are still modernizations. They're the Houston, Lang, those are all in there. This is not a deviation from that. All we're saying is that when looking in the future, the attendance boundary that, that supports Blaser, and again, Blaser is the very, very top of that attendance boundary.
Right.
So, so there's not a school in between there to the south that, that you can actually move students to.
Right.
The only thing that we could do is actually create additional capacity. And we can't create an elementary school on a high school piece of land. And so the, the thought there was, let's position ourselves so that in the future, when that growth, you know, it's already realized, but, you know, we're prepared, at least at that point, to deliver an elementary school. So that, that was the reasoning behind it. But no, Langford, Houston, those are still in here as modernizations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sabata. Trustee say?
So I've heard back from Legal. Thank you, Ms. Badio. I guess what I would like to do is just, Dr., President Rodriguez, if it's okay, could I save my turn to members of the Bond Steering Committee and Ms. Barbara Spears Corbett and her team who are here in attendance? Thank you.
Yes. Sorry. I was most shitting in my head and I just realized I did not verbalize that. So.
Thank you.
Welcome and thank you for being here.
Therefore, ah, it's on now, huh?
Yeah.
I'm Barbara Spears Corbett, the co-chair for the Bond Steering Committee. And I know over the past few weeks, even though I haven't been able to be with you, you have received presentations from the Bond Steering Committee, and we've made the proposal for the larger package, which was the $2.2 billion. So it would, with tonight's proposal, it would be remiss of us, the Bond Steering Committee, not to continue our work. We don't see our work has ended as we look at now the new draft, that we feel that it is very important that we make a contribution also, the committee. And yes, you saw us going in and out, and we had a meeting, and we responded by letting you know, yes, we had a quorum, we had a full meeting, and this is coming from your Bond Steering Committee, what I'm proposing. I'm glad that I had an opportunity to hear from all the trustees. So therefore, this presentation now is a little, it, you can see where, where it fits and where it's coming from. I'd like to thank, because I haven't had that opportunity, so bear with me. Thank Dr. Holly for using the equity by design. And we've had a year, a little over a year process of going through that process. As a result, we feel we are very strong behind our proposal and recommendations. And although you're saying accepting 80% or 88%, this committee would like for you to accept 100%. We do understand that you will interject, you have taken our proposal, and there are some possible recommendations or changes. So to start with, in saying that, it was important that I say that our initial proposal is a proposal we hope that you would accept fully. Now, we've had an opportunity to look at what is proposed for tonight. And our concern is that our lens and our focus was equity. That was your, that was our mission and goal for your 2022 bond. 2017 bond, a little bit different. It was worse first, but this is a new direction. So we looked at what is in the current recommendation that's been before you tonight. And like I said, was glad to hear the discussion. And we looked at that proposal and looked at considerations of comments and suggestions that have come from you, the board, and as well as the community over these last few weeks that has led to this, this now latest proposal. So we're going to just talk numbers, but I need you to know that these numbers, and with this proposal, is still coming from your Bond Steering Committee through the equity lens. We did consider FCA and ESA. They always say it takes me a long time to get to the point, but I'm now ready. On the proposal number two, and we will, this is handwritten, quickly handwritten, but we will present this to each board member formally, what I'm presenting to you tonight. First off, our first recommendation in reviewing everything, we looked at the district proposal and looked at what was built into that proposal. That was not a part of ours. So how could we apply our equity lens, and especially listening to what Dr. Foster had just said, to our equity lens to this, that we're not just about numbers and dollars, and we're not just randomly throwing dollars at different locations to say that we have done something, but fully, fully look at the projects? So if we look at that proposal, which we are considering at number three, which is kind of out of order, things we're looking at, because of the strong impact that this, that proposal had on LBJ and Northeast with those recommendations. So we're looking at removing these new dollars that came in there. And again, based on equity. We looked at Bear Creek, removing Bear Creek, moving Anderson High School back to its phase, from its phase, back to its deficiencies and the gym and locker room support that we had given in our bond, in our proposal. Moving Austin High from a phase two mod back to its deficiencies that are in our bond B. Moving McCallum from a phase back to its $30 million project and working. Reduce Navarro back $5 million. Reduce Crockett, because we're supporting Crockett and Navarro, but backing off $5 million and $10 million. If we look at these dollars, that will give us back the $112 million that was taken away from LBJ and Northeast in that whole adjustment. It is a little disconcerning and concerning that when the question is asked about LBJ to complete its phase two, to have a completely, complete modernization, that at this rate, 20 to 25 years to finish a campus, that we will be ready to say, oh, we need to look at this again, just to get the modernizations done. That is a little concerning. And is that fair? Is that equitable to, to have that type of response for LBJ or Northeast, that 20 to 25 years till we get to doing all the phases to have a full and complete campus? We also did a proposal, looking at our proposal, reexamining the proposal that we submitted to you, which was the bond B proposal, taking in consideration some of the concerns of, did we fairly look at FCA? Did we look at ESA? Yes, we did. But let's go back and look at it again because of the questions that you raised. So we went back and looked at bond B. Now, I need to back up. In the proposal and the discussion about MNO, we are totally supported, supporting the Bond Steering Committee in reducing the MNO concern. We've had discussions, that was a part of our discussions, on how to bring money back, so that that additional money can go into staffing, into schools, into our students, with our teachers, all the projects that you have talked about, that what we could do, teacher raises, all of those things. So in looking at that, we needed you to know that. So in our bond B and quickly in, in adjusting that, again, using the equity by, by design and taking your feedback, that maybe Burnett, if you want to talk about phases, that, okay, maybe we can do Burnett in two phases. Yes, we have full modernization, but can it be done in two phases? We're not talking about four, five or six phases. We're talking about two. Then that would give $77 million back. You made the reductions, well, not you, I'm sorry, in the proposal that's on the, before us now, there are reductions in technology. And some of those reductions are based on possible assistance or grants or other things. That was $63 million. So $77 million, $63 million, that came up with $140 million that we could find in our, in our proposal. With that $140 million, these things, the, the proposals and the projects that are in the current proposal, that $140 million, here's some suggestions on how could we apply this now in this project. O'Henry, you had $54 million. Maybe that can come into the project. All the MNO concerns for those campuses with the deficiencies, the $10 million, such as the $10 million at Highland, the $5 million additional that was at Riker, additional $14 million for the classroom additions, that's a concern for your Bear Creek concern, Clifton, increase the Crockett Gym and Lockers, Jordan. We have a list of the suggested, that how can you spread this $140 million and still keep an equitable project? So this is from your Bond Steering Committee. And we want to, and hopefully- And we want to, and hopefully, we had eight members, and they all reviewed this, and you have their input. And hopefully, I haven't left anything out, but it was most important that you did hear from us and have our input. And it was very important to know that we are still following the process that has been presented to us by Dr. Holly and her crew of how to approach this project and using equity as the guidance. And looking at these proposals, these are numbers, but numbers that hopefully will make an impact. It's a lot of projects, and we can only do so much, but where is the fairness as we look at the underserved, historically underserved groups that we are trying to address? Thank you.
Thank you so much. And before you leave, I don't know, President Rodriguez, were you going to, I don't know if you've been getting texts from our legal counsel or?
I have not.
Okay. But I know, I know Dr. Rech is turning red back there, and I feel like if you have any advice on how we should characterize this presentation, Dr. Mays, would it be okay if we heard from Dr. Rech real quick? Because I want to make sure we don't get in trouble legally if we have to say some fine print.
Perhaps you could ask Dr. Mays how he, he would like to address this.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I, I was about to say, Dr. Rech, please help keep us legal, so go ahead and come on up.
I don't want to invalidate what you, that beautiful presentation, so.
So back to my point, we, we did want to make sure that we heard the feedback, we just wanted to make sure that, again, we did it in the right way. And so Dr. Rech is about to help us with that.
Thank you. So I am the district advisory, or the district chair for advisory committees. And so I, I just wanted to mention, for our committees, we do require, as part of our bylaws, postings of meetings and following of quorum. By all means, we welcome individuals to share their feedback as individuals, but I, I, we would not be able to say that it's an action of the Bond Steering Committee, because they would need to be able to post a meeting for 72 hours, have that visible to the public, and make that meeting available to all the members. And I may be mistaken on this, but I also believe a quorum is nine for the Bond Steering Committee, because they have 17 members.
We count it.
Yeah, so 17 members would require nine.
No, we, we're 15. We're 15.
Quorum is of the total membership. But, but either way, by all means, individuals are welcome to give their individual input. I just wanted to be able to speak on behalf of a committee.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Rech. I think, I don't know if Christine is on the phone or?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Um, no, I think Jacob summed it up just fine. The, again, the Bond Steering Committee is not, they're not actually subject to the Open Meetings Act as a legal matter. It's more a matter of their actual, their charter. And so I think this is just, perhaps just a little bit of clarification based on the verbiage of the charter and just kind of the impromptu nature of the, the presentation. So as not to mischaracterize it, I think is, is the point here that Dr. Rech is trying to make.
Yeah, thank you. Any other?
No, I just wanted to really thank you, and thank you to the folks who, who very hurriedly got stuff done. And I'm just saying, whatever training y'all got in equity and collaboration and being flexible, I think I want that training. So thank you. It really shows. So I appreciate your work.
Thank you. So trustee Singh, is there, okay, so trustee Wagner?
It feels to me like we're, we're getting stuck in this place of absolutes. And I don't. I think what we have before us is a plan that is very, very heavily weighted to meet undermet needs of historically underserved communities. That is not changed. What has changed is that we have addressed some of the balance, a very small amount of the balance in this bond package with this latest recommendation from administration. Because there's very much of a reality to this, we could have the absolute perfect equity bond, but there is a very real picture that we're facing that it likely would not pass at the polls. And in that case, nobody wins. And I feel like my responsibility on this board is to sit before you and share with you what I hear from my community and, and the district that I'm elected by, and what they need to be able to support a bond project, a bond program, I mean. I will defend all day long that the majority of the projects are not in West Austin. I will defend that all day long. But at the end of the day, I would be remiss if I approved a bond package that I felt would not meet the minimum level of what voters are looking for in every single part of town. And yes, that is the sad reality of systemic racism, but it is a reality. And I think, you know, I had a conversation with Dr. Foster one evening where he used the phrase of, sorry, I'm going to quote you tonight, I hope you don't mind, at some point, is it more important to fight or is it more important to, to win the things that we need for our students? And I, I'm choosing to stay on the side of making sure that we have a realistic bond that we can pass and that we can deliver over $2 billion worth of investment to the students of Austin ISD, better teaching spaces for the staff and administrators within our district, and $2 billion worth of construction projects that the, the labor force of Austin can work on over the next five years. Those are huge things that I don't want to lose sight of because perfection becomes the enemy of the good. And I know I'll be roundly criticized for saying these things, but at the same time, I have to choose to be pragmatic rather than idealistic in, in my approach and in my vote and my decision-making on this, because I desperately want this bond to pass, because I know how much this district needs it.
Thank you, trustee Wagner.
I really appreciated the reminder of, of bringing forward the definition of equity and making sure that children have what they need. I think we could all stand up here and debate for a long time the definition of need. And I would invite people to come and see a lot of the conditions at any of our schools. And I, I, I think there, as someone who has toured many, many, many of our campuses, one of the things that I was struck by when doing that was the realization from all people that served on, on the facilities and bond planning advisory committee when stepping outside of their space, because all of us would walk into schools, into areas of town where we had not been and say, I can't believe this is the condition of your school. And it didn't matter where we were located. So what I find now is a situation where I know there is need all over the district, all over the district. And I 100% understand and support the predominance of the projects being with our underserved communities. And I recognize that there still are significant needs that could be met with, in a relative sense of the overall size of the bond, is smaller, a small amount to make a big difference in what has been defined as low opportunity schools. So I find that we are all in a very tough situation. Because I do see the need, and I know it exists, all over. I think I've also appreciated the statements tonight, that there is no perfect bond, and there is no perfect work. And I think we are all trying to do the best we can. And that we're all interested in the best interests of students and our staff to have what they need. So I still stand behind what I said earlier. And my reason for supporting the phasing of our secondary schools actually had to do more with understanding the construction process as it was explained when I served on FabPac, that full modernizations at secondary schools are extremely tough to do, because we don't have the swing space to do it. And Travis presents a unique opportunity, but the majority of our secondary schools don't have that ability. And because we can phase these schools, it allows us to be able to impact positively a higher number of students that we serve, no matter where they are, whether they're at Anderson, whether they're at Crockett, whether they're at Navarro, whether they're at McCallum. I find it interesting that we are now pitting, that's certainly what it feels like to me, we are pitting ourselves in this way, and saying that some students deserve no investment at all. And I fully respect and understand and have heard that we have communities that have been waiting for a very, very long time for an investment in their schools, which is why I support the majority of the investments being where they are. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ashi. Trustee Foster?
Uh, I'm good.
Trustee Boswell?
I'm good, thank you.
I am looking forward to the response about the request I had earlier. And Dr. Mays, I want to thank you and your team and the Bond Steering Committee for all their work as well. I don't know if you have any?
Yeah, I, I would say, we can tell that, you know, this is a tough conversation to have. I think that everybody has, you know, the best interests of our students and our faculty and staff at heart. And so these are the challenging conversations that get us where we need to be. And so I just want to definitely thank our team, because I know that it is not easy having the conversations behind closed doors and then coming out here and facing some of the scrutiny that we have. But we're all doing it for the right reasons and for our students, so thank you.
So trustees, I just want to ask if there is any interest in doing one more round Yes, no, nope?
I'd, I'd only express gratitude for all the work that so many folks are doing and that, and, you know, the acknowledgement, this is really hard work.
Yeah. Trustee Boswell?
Uh, very much the same. Really grateful for the process, the work in so many ways by so many, and really the chance to have these hard conversations as a community. And, and we know that we live in a state that doesn't invest enough in our schools, not nearly enough in our schools, and that works with the situation where we do to make hard choices. And really appreciate the chance to really dive deep and talk candidly and honestly with, with a community that I love and respect. And I just thank everyone for the conversation.
Thank you, trustee, trustee Zapata? We're just doing either last comments or, or question, or any last questions?
Well, thank you all again for all your hard work, the, the committee. We really appreciate all your, your commitment to this and your, your commitment to continue as well. Yes, it's never easy to, it's never easy to, to do the right thing, but I stand with what I've said about, it's not the last bond we're ever going to pass. It's not that we don't want other students to benefit anything. That's not the point. It's, we only have a certain amount of money. We had a, a community that looked deep into what our needs were. They did the work, and I want to respect that work. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zapata.
I just, I think what's on my mind right now is, I think I heard the word pragmatic come up, and it resonates with me, but I also think we can be, I think we can do a little bit better. I understand the need of getting this to pass, you know, professionally, I'm a grant writer, and so I know that sometimes, you know, we're, right now, we're writing the grant, we're trying to get the money, which is diff, very different from already having the money. And so that is a lens that I'm looking through. It is not 100% equitable, I will admit that. I think we all need to admit that what, you know, what we're seeing in this latest version is not, it's not 100% equitable, but we just have to decide if we're willing to live with that. If it means that it increases the chances for this to pass, which is not ideal. I will say that what I hope we get to one day in this district is a point where we can actually really stand up in all parts of Austin and say what Dr. Foster said earlier. I think that's what was just so compelling, to remind us that we have to ensure that we prioritize the folks who, who need it most. And I wish that, I know I've stood in front of a, a roomful of people near, in West Austin, in my kid, own kid's elementary school, and, and got very criticized. But sometimes we just, you know, for, for, for looking at the whole city, and I think sometimes that is our role. I'll just be really frank. And I, I get a little worried when I hear folks say, I'm not going to vote for something because, you know, my neighborhood in West Austin is not going to get something. Because we all really have to serve our students. And, and I understand that's true, but I also want to see that balanced with a message of saying, like a really strong message of saying, but that's not good enough, and I really hope that we're going to just do better. And I, I just hope that our district does a, we, we as trustees, as I said before, I think we need more equity training. I think I need it, I need more, because it's so hard for me to communicate sometimes what I'm feeling, obviously. And we need to learn how to be able to stand up in front of a room of people who, who might not see what I think I heard from our Bond Steering Committee. And, and we all need to kind of just move a little further. So all I ask is for just a little bit of flexibility for all of us, a little pragmatism mixed with a little idealism. And I think we are really, I do still think we are really, really close. So thank you all very much.
Trustee Wagner?
Nothing else for me.
Trustee Ashi?
Yeah, thank you.
So that's a third, that concludes a third round of questions or comments. Um, so that's a third, that concludes a third round of questions or comments from the board. I think, unless, Dr. Mays, you have any final words, I just wanna thank you all again, the administration and the bond steering committee for all the work. And I'm gonna ask Secretary Singh if I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Same with.
There's a second. Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Zapata to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the, Trustee Zapata, will you raise your right hand? The motion passes by all those on the dais. The meeting is now adjourned at ten forty PM.